So Ryan, they did a great job on Green Park.
Yeah, the new stop down hit?
Yeah, it stopped down. I missed them. I was gonna take their picture and then they probably knew it, so.
But they all ran?
So they all ran. It scattered like the four winds. Are they putting in a?
It's all you, Mayor.
Alright, so this is the March 21st, 2022. Work session, the discussion board of trustees. And number two is a presentation of the tenant's budget for this year, 2022.
Your microphone off.
Oh, sorry. You've each been emailed the thing. It's very much the same as what you saw originally, that the only differences are that we took took out of Ryan's salt budget, sort of with his grudging permission, for a thousand dollars to put toward the the program that keeps track of and assigns park use things. We had, we talked about that last year and didn't have the money for it, but it sounded like it would make our life a whole lot easier. So then also, we took twenty thousand out of the fire department budget for the the grant, the grant match for SCBA's. We're proposing to spend that out of our funds instead of appropriate use. Is there anything else for you? I think that's it. Okay, yeah, out of the F, alright. The F fund, was that in the budget for, it wasn't the, okay. So the, in the in the, in the water fund, there was thirty thousand, thirty? Fifty for for well through, for fixing well three?
Is it what?
Well, two.
It says two here.
Two. And so we took that out of there, so we didn't have to raise the water, water rates and put that in the ARPA fund request also. So anybody have any questions?
Was that a total fifty, thirty and four, so we said?
Yeah, well, the four doesn't, this doesn't really.
Just a transfer.
Yeah. So was it two point three, Maria? I don't have it written down.
The tax rate increase, two point one seven, and the tax, taxes that you have to raise is two point.
Two six? Two point two six, right?
Inflation at ten percent and a levy increase at two point two six.
Not too bad, anyway.
Yeah, I think it's important, you know, I was asking Maria about the numbers that we didn't know about. The thing, the numbers that made us.
Well, we've seen an increase in revenue, which we haven't seen in quite some time.
Which is the tax, the tax.
Mortgage tax, like through the roof, right?
Yeah.
Sales tax.
Justin helped with the mortgage tax, I assume. And one of, one of many. The houses going up in, in value that mortgages do too.
Yeah.
So those three things, the core revenue, the sales tax, as well as the mortgage. Example, you know, to go line through line, but I think we, you know, I think we're just starting to see things come back, you know, especially core revenue.
That's those things we don't know.
And then we had deduction in some areas of expenses because of Dan, Lee's department, which is twelve hour shift, so the sixty thousand, fifty or sixty thousand dollars reduction in overtime.
Wow.
Every department, I have to say, did amazing job. They each worked with either Teresa or Nubie in the office and one time, he was doing, Ryan was doing his final current projection, it was like seven hundred and twenty dollars the line, and he's like, are you really gonna spend seven ten? And I'm like, alright.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, two point two six percent is still over the tax cap, which is why it's important to have that that ability to go even if it's a minor number, just.
But just putting in perspective, the tax cap is one point zero two percent, not even two percent, so.
So anyway.
Hopefully we continue to see those revenues not decrease moving forward. It said, my mother's friend, her house was on the market for three days. And I cash, cash off for a thousand dollars over asking, just this past week.
Anybody have any questions on that?
That's all positive. That's all positive.
Yeah, it is. Item number three. We need to talk more about the ARPA funds. I would like if we can that we've gotten a quote from EMCOR to replace the burners in the furnace, which are so, the two furnaces.
It's not just the burners.
Which are.
Right, right, boiler, it's burners, transformers and a control box.
And we talked about this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I would, would like if we, if we can do that to, what's that all about?
What?
Splashing screen, weird. So. I proposing to, to take the furnace burners out of the ARPA funds. And I would like if we can to, if we can agree on doing that today, I'd like to tell Ryan to, so we can go ahead and sign the thing, so we can get those ordered. It takes like three months or something to to make the things, they're specials, specially made. So if we have any hope of having heat next fall.
Just to ask the question, I mean, why is it parks instead of the whole boilers? Or one big one, or?
A whole boiler would be over sixty thousand.
Sixty per, like thirty.
And how many burners?
There's one per boiler, so there's one side heats PD and the clerk's office, and the other side faces the fire department. The one on PD clerk's side is spending us the most trouble on fire department side, they've been having some issues recently as well, so. And we keep throwing parts and money at it, and it's probably time to invest a little bit more and make it more reliable.
So, but the, but the boilers themselves right now are okay?
The boilers are good shit, yeah, they do an inspection on, and they, they're in good shape, yeah.
So just thinking slightly more long term, would these boilers be reused in a renovated municipal facility?
Yeah, no, that'd be, that would be one of the things you'd want to be part of it.
So.
The renovation, that's one of the main things you'd want to do more efficiently.
So we'd be using ten thousand dollars of ARPA funds now.
Fifteen five.
Fifteen five on ARPA funds now, that potentially if, if a municipal facilities project gets passed in two year, this year, in two years, the burners are gonna be.
That's correct. The option, the other option is, is going into next year without any heat.
We've been throwing thousands of dollars recently, just to keep them trying to go.
Are they working now?
Yes.
Right now, yes.
And so is there, has there been any word in terms of the life expectancy as to the new repairs that have been made?
No, they can't guarantee, they were going day by day.
So we don't know if we're gonna have heat or not?
No, we were out a few days already this past month without heat here.
Okay, but then repairs were made subsequently to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they.
They can't guarantee it's gonna last two days, a week, or.
So they set, they set the B team and we had people working from home, because it was cold in here. And they set the B team and they couldn't get it going. And the, the A team guy came back and, and coaxed it into going with a hammer by the sounds of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you're looking at, like, the replacement of those boilers will be three to, three to four years from now?
It could be.
Goes, if the referendum is successful.
So, so.
So we're hoping that it lasts three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we, we're relatively sure that the ones that are there aren't gonna last three years, so, because they're shot.
And what's the repair, like, what was the repair bill last, this last go around?
As of right now, we're at like fifteen hundred, expecting probably another thousand plus dollar bill.
That's just last past month though, right?
That was just the past.
We add up the heating season.
If we add them all up, we're a thousand.
Heat's important, I'm not dismissing that, right? It's obvious, and we don't know really what the projection's gonna be with the facilities project. It's a lot of money, right? But I, it has to be weighed out as to, well, we do need heat.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have a lot of choice, anyway. So then the other two on there are the.
Can I just say?
Testing with the plumbing, which is even scarier.
Yeah, no, see, these are, these are steam boilers.
Yeah.
And you don't want that in a new building, or in a renovation.
You want, you want a high efficiency, you want a high efficiency boiler in a new building.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and, and all through this building are rusty pipes that run these things, and they're, half of them are clogged. And so that, the whole idea is to ditch those and tear them right out.
Just fifteen thousand's all I have money.
It is, but you don't have heat.
And what's the, with these burners, what's the risk of a carbon monoxide leak?
I don't think there's any more than, I mean, you'd be more prone to carbon monoxide with the old burners not burning properly.
Well, that, that's what I mean, like, if we didn't replace the burners, we'd be running risk of a carbon monoxide leak.
Above the source of fresh air down there, those boilers require fresh air, so.
I've never been to the boiler room.
Oh, I take it.
It's, it's really pretty cool.
After the meeting, I'll, I'll go downstairs with you.
You should see the boiler room in the, in the front house.
That's pretty good.
Alright.
A little lower ceiling than this one.
That's true.
So you already heard about the SCBA grant, so, actually, let's could I get a motion to let Ryan sign the, the form for the, or me sign the form for the EMCOR for fifteen five and get the burners going?
Can I just ask one question before we say rebuild a well two, what's the cost of that?
I, what I said in the prime was fifty, I can't guarantee that's gonna be what exactly it comes in at. We had three, three dollars for PD, thought it was gonna be like thirty four thousand, it came in at like forty one thousand, so.
So fifty, seventy, eighty five, five.
For what?
From ARPA funds, and out of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So if.
Well, we're only at four this year.
I'm just trying to put.
Are there other, are there other budget lines from this year that aren't fully depleted that we might be able to put towards these boilers?
I don't.
I'd hate to, you, I mean, I know, I know this is kind of like an emergency repair situation, but with ARPA funds, you know, being a one-time thing, there, I know there's, there's other, other items and, and that we could potentially use that, that money for, I just wanna make sure that especially on, on an emergency repair item, that in three to four years, hopefully doesn't be replaced, I, I would rather see something with longevity come out of the ARPA funds. Like well number two, or something along, which well number two will last us thirty, thirty years. As opposed to, you know, fifteen five for four years. I know I'm speaking somewhat with a crystal ball, that.
We're hoping it's less than that.
Thing about, like you said, the one-time ARPA funds, and, you know, that's why I just wanted to get a bigger board line off, if we start those selected items from the budget are not gonna be there next year in the sense that the four thousand dollars of salt could be, you know, put back or be fluid. The other three, the three items that we're talking about, though, aren't gonna be there, so we're not really replacing budget items with ARPA funds, which would be the, would be the irresponsible thing to do, using the money to do things that are gonna come back.
Yeah.
I, I can all, I can I think I can see a path where this works, and it's not gonna affect us on the next budget cycle, we've been so successful this year that.
And it's something.
And with replacing of these boilers for this year, you know, we'll be spending less in repairs, you know, over the next four years, so you don't have to put any more money into these boilers.
And it's, it's, it's easier to waste parts of them rather than the whole thing, in my opinion. Like, if you replace them now, you're gonna waste them anyway, like the whole boiler. So I will make a motion to do we have to do them individually?
I think we're just doing the one, yeah.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to pay fifteen thousand five hundred dollars to EMCOR for the furnace burner replacement. And this is just a maintenance company, this isn't something that we would have to go out to competitive bid for, because it's a maintenance issue, it's a maintenance item, it's not a new expense, so. I will make that motion.
A second.
All favor? So also with the request for ARPA funds, Bev came in to try to blow the horn for the front house, you wanna tell us how you're doing, Bev?
Oh, sure, I have, I always have a wish list, so I will just put it that way first. But we've also had many heat issues in the front house over the last eight, nine years. It's been better, I don't know what, you had some repairs done, and so it's way better this year than it has been in the past, so whatever, now whether more repairs need to be done, or a new boiler or something, there is, I believe, in that, that boiler has attached hot water heater, which is not which was taken offline, so there's no hot water there, so.
It's still going through a lot of oil.
That I, I know nothing about, so I'll put it that way. It's, as I said, sixty, you know, for the, I have not been in, because I haven't been doing the office hours yet, and it's always fifty in the winter anyway, because it's working, but we did get a data logger, so I've been able to follow, you know, the things, and it's been pretty good, so every once in a while it goes down to forty, so something, something's not working. But that's a long-term problem, and I'm not sure I believe that boiler well was replaced since we owned the house, so you know, twenty years old maybe, I don't know. But I'm sure that's in the records somewhere, exactly when I just put in, it's been repaired, we've looked at it. There's a whole valve issue, I mean, it works, all of, you know, all the radiators work fine, so I don't think there's any issues with that, just you know. We did wonders at our house just replacing valves, and I believe some of them have been replaced, and made a huge difference for like three hundred bucks. But nevertheless, the heat is still an unknown issue, but it's been slightly better, so whatever the repairs were, I don't know what they were, you know what they were, but. Yes, it does seem to be pretty consistent, so I just thought I'd mention that, because it's been such a recurring problem. The other thing Tom mentioned, he said, well, what, what, you know, what's your wish list, and what kind of things would you like done? And there are a couple of things in the cell, in that it has asbestos on the pipes, which should be either taken out or encapsulated or something like that. Especially if you wanted to get anything done down there, repairs, things like that, it's, you know, I've had, you know, enough people joking about, well, you just get old, the old people to do it, because it takes thirty years, you know, the asbestos.
You gotta encapsulate the woodchuck too?
Uh, yes, maybe, because there are places where the woodchuck goes in, and I'm not sure where you go, because I've never seen them. But the foundation does have some problems, it should be evaluated. And possibly repairs today, which again is another asbestos related thing, you know, if you're asking people to work in an environment with asbestos, you have to consider that, I don't know what the laws are about that, but I know there are some. But because it's a historic house, and archaeology issues, you would want to get an evaluation of the foundation for the information to tell us, there's a lot of questions about how the house was built, it was built all at once, it was built in sections, there's a lot of interesting things that could be found out from the foundation, before it was just like dug up or something, so you definitely want to have archaeology done, you know, I don't feel to ask about that, whether it would be someone to get funding for, but rather than you just go in with a bagel and you're talking about it, you know, historic building, so. That's a, a big question about the foundation, but it's true, Tom's seen them, you've probably seen the woodchuck too.
He's a, he's a sizable person.
The fact that the woodchuck.
Whether he's still there, now that spring's coming, we'll see, but.
The fact that a woodchuck can dig a hole through a foundation is quite concerning.
Well.
It's just dry stone, so.
Yeah, it's still foundation, so, you know, and in general, it's in fairly good shape, the houses in all, like, all cracks in the walls and that kind of thing, so. But the, but it does need some, there are some issues down there. The other question is the exterior maintenance, as you know, people down there, the siding looks terrible. Neglected, and that's not really what we want to say about the house, you know. The ideal thing to do is to take the siding off and either restore the clavates or have them replaced, which you've chatted with someone, that's a big expensive job, sixty thousand, it's more along those lines. What it would be to just replace that siding, so it looked halfway decent, the front of the house is, has been replaced, it is wood, it is board, only the back, the other three sides are a little bit incised, but even vinyl siding or even paint would make it look a lot better instead of looking neglected, because that doesn't reflect well on any of us. And, you know, the windows need the, need a little paint and stuff like that, but that seems like a project that could be done at various levels, from painting the siding, replacing the siding, or going all the way for wood, which is the best historic thing to do for it. The roof, of course, you know, it's got moss on it, it's been on there twenty five years or so. At some point, before long, it's gonna have to be replaced, so that's on the list, it's not, nothing's leaking, but it's trying to show its, show its age. The other thing, let's see, and the roof has already been replaced many times over the years, so it doesn't have to be particularly historical, like we have to put wood shanks on, because that's what it probably had originally, you know, we can just put a new roof on, although it's a little fancier than the plain flat one, so it looked a little bit, those kind of fake wood shingle looking ones would probably be the best choice, so you could give it a little character. There's a couple of, you know, bricks loose in the chimney, somebody should take a look at those, some of these. There's a couple of, you know, bricks loose in the chimney. Somebody should take a look at those. Some of these are just maintenance items. There's also the question of whether to try to move forward with getting the building on the historic register, which does give you a chance for funding. But the study to do that, to have someone come in and do the study probably costs around ten thousand dollars. You can get a grant, you can get grants for that. We tried once, but we didn't get it that time around. Um, that would pay, I think, um, at least half, maybe up to eighty percent of the cost of that study. And then you can apply. So that's something to consider. They.
What, um, if you don't mind me asking, what was, um, what was the determination from the grant funder as why they didn't fund the grant?
Just, just compared to all the other projects that we have, basically.
Okay.
And the house is not in bad shape, so it's more of a study, putting it on the register, but, um, not a study like that, save this.
So you think that's like a lot of the grant, preservation grant funding or for like the buildings in downtown, the first building in downtown Albany that's.
Right.
Near falling down.
Well, I mean, I just tried for the one from, um, the preservation league in New York and so. Like all grants, they get so many on the desk and they pick the best ones, so. It's been projects that are under some other category.
And if one that's not on a historic registry and one that is on that historic registry comes in front of somebody, they're gonna.
Historic district or they try to move them around, so there's not too many in one county and, you know.
Yeah.
If you've ever been on a grant award, you know, things you have to juggle, so. Uh, but that might be something and you, then you'd analyze, analyze the border and basement. You can, you know, get some things done by volunteers. The, uh, all beams in the basement were, um, plotted and you could see if they were hand, hands on, if they were, you know, mechanical saw. What years they probably were from and all these things, buildings, they would use things, dating the building. There's people that think it was built in seventeen hundreds. Um, I think I agree with those who think the evidence is more towards the eighteen twenties or thirties, but. Um, there could be a lot of parts of the building that were from seventeen hundreds and all those kind of little details would be fascinating, but. Some of those come with, um, getting the study done and to determine why you go on the historic register. Probably qualify, but, uh, anyway, um, another big project in terms of. Preserving the building, preserving the things that have been collected over the years, is it really needs some kind of a HVAC system? So you could get air conditioning, some humidity control, all that stuff. So that's the somewhere down the line part of the story. There's lots of ways to look at that, but if this is a wish list, there you go. It really should. The other thing that would be really good for the stuff inside the building is to. Have some UV blocking. You could do interior storms with UV blocking plexi. You could, really someone could make it themselves. It's not that hard and there's lots of instructions about how to do that sort of thing. And since it doesn't have storm windows on it anyway, interior storms with UV blocking would be really good to do. So that's just another. Thing on the list, so.
You know what that costs?
Um. No, but I could, I could find out about that. I know you can buy the UV blocking stuff. Probably enough for the building for a thousand or less.
That, that'd help the heating bill too.
Oh, it probably would. So, uh, those are the, some of the things on the list. So if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer something now or. You know, email me and I can get you more information. But, uh, if anyone who hasn't been over there would like to come by, also get in touch, I'd be happy to take you over for a tour.
We should do a tour.
We should. Good, uh, as the new guy on the board, I'm, I'm least familiar with really the operations of the Flint House. So I, I, I do have a question for you. Like, what, what do you see as kind of like? The future of the Flint House for the village? What, what is it that you hope to see there, not only programmatically, but historically?
Well, what I think, um, and other people, um, we, we worked and it's. Many things happened, COVID got in the way, but we were starting to try to get together, this Scottish Historical Society again and revive that. Um, but programs, but also to have it a museum that would be open on a somewhat regular basis, even if it was just every weekend or something like that. For the future and, um, you could have changing exhibits as well as different things and try to make it really more programmatic. Um, I've been able to work on, again, over the last couple of years, doing a couple of events a year and, um. Ten office hours and things like that, but you could have it open more as a museum. Um, and I think that would be great and be more willing to collect things, um. Related to the village, because it's not a lot of storage space, so if you just, you know, I'm sure you're at it, come on down. We have, we'd love to have your old stuff, though, but, uh, things, things connected to the village, um, they have some.
Are the charlie trucks still up?
Well, we should, we should have a couple, yeah, yeah.
So we have, there is an organization called Scotia Historical Society that was set up in the eighties, I think. Maybe nineties. It still has some members alive and willing to help out. They just weren't willing to help out during COVID. So we had a few meetings before COVID and then. We've been quiet since then and I think they're ready to come back and start, uh, but the hope was that.
I think you'll have some free time this fall to.
There's a charter, it's filed with the education department and it's, it just needs to be reactivated.
Cause I can see a lot of, I'm, I'm an educator by trade and I can see a lot of service learning opportunity through the, through the Flint House. And involving, you know, high school students, college students from S E C C. I know you've done some archaeology part partnerships with SUNY Schenectady. Union Co- Union College, so.
Um, well, I did and we're gonna have some stuff in there. We're gonna do that and, um, they had, of course, archaeology done over there, so.
So the idea is to get them back working and get some fundraising going, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, it sounds like a capital campaign.
Right.
A capital campaign is.
Exactly.
I just wanted to add too, I, I'm a big advocate of looking into the, the historical society and see what opportunities we have there as well. The mayor and I did have a meeting, um, I, I'm a strong proponent of having some programs down. Eventually in the Flint House too with the youth. And I know youth programs is an area that we're trying to focus on in the future, but the mayor and I did have a meeting with Stahary.
Not quite.
They came in and we were talking about this idea as a, as trying to utilize the Flint House. Um, in the future, so that's something to brainstorm and consider as well.
Right, and I think that, I mean, the main thing, um. Getting people to do things.
Right.
Well, there, one of the gentlemen that did join us, um, was proposing a few things to get the youth involved. And to try to help out down there. Um, I know he mentioned a few in our meeting, so.
It's, um, and, and you have, um, do you have, obviously you have experience. You sound like you have experience on the grant funding side of things. So you, you write all the grants for, for the Flint House currently?
Yes, but we haven't really done that much, because, um, to plan big programs.
Have you thought about, you know, partnerships with Schenectady County Historical Society?
Um, we have worked with them to do, um, some walking tours and stuff like that. Um, but they, uh, I mean, I know, I know everyone over there, so we could certainly open a conversation if we had some good ideas.
Okay, so it's.
The first thing is getting our board back together.
Correct, and, and looking at capacity building for this, it sounds like. Getting the building on the historic register is, sounds like a no-brainer first step, especially if it's gonna unlock other funding. And if, if that's gonna put the Flint House in competitive advantage, I definitely see that as a much needed. Thing and then it, through the assessment, we'd be able to probably do some of the things like the foundation evaluation.
That would be part.
Would be part of it, so I, I definitely think the, the foundation assessment and the, the evaluation. For historic register would be a great use of Arpa funds to begin a prop and also give us the information we need. To be able to have the volunteers launch a capital campaign to then fund. Many of these additional big ticket items, um, including soliciting sponsorships from, from, you know, local businesses. Corporations, grant funding through the state and preservation league. Um, an evaluation is gonna be essential even to get Red Sea funding, um, through the consolidated application.
So. Uh, let's. So the, so the next step, do, do you agree with Justin that, that that would be a good first step? I mean, if we.
Um, well.
I mean, I know it's, it's an expensive process to get on the historic register and get the studies necessary and that sort of thing.
So I could, um, contact the person that was gonna do the one, when we applied for the grants before. And, um, just get back in touch with them and, you know, talk about it.
Can, can us an idea of what, what we're talking about and let's see if we can go there. We're not, not ready to do anything with it yet, but soon.
I certainly can, can do that, so I'll get in touch with them then. Preservation funding may only be in the spring for a big project, but they do smaller projects in the fall where they're just doing the foundations. That is a small project. I don't know, but I could look at that.
If you need help, you know, something, I'm delicate and being in touch with you anyways, so.
Well, um, I'll, I'll get in touch with them, um, while I leave the guy.
Yeah.
See, he was willing to do it before and, uh, he was easy to talk to, so I'll get in touch with him. And get back to you.
And I'll be following you early. I'm a huge history buff. I love history, so.
Well, we can arrange a tour.
Yes.
Especially now that it's light in the evening.
And past COVID, almost.
Thank you.
Almost. We may still wanna wear our masks and those. Flint House, it's not that big.
Thank you, Bev. All right, let's, Sean, do you wanna talk to us?
No, literally passing through.
Okay. Alright, so. You.
Can I just, can we go, still stay on Arpa for a minute?
Hang on for one sec, let's, um. Is next Tuesday? Can we talk about doing a tour on Tuesday? You guys wanna do it Monday? It's like six. We've got a Dems meeting at seven thirty, but we could do it at six.
I'm open either way, because all of us will be there. I mean, this has to be noticed, right? Because all five of us are gonna be in one place at one time.
Yeah.
So I, I just request that we, whatever date we pick, it's within enough time to be, to be noticed.
You good for Tuesday, George?
I have.
Monday?
Another meeting on Tuesday.
What's that?
I have another meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, how about Monday?
The twenty eighth.
One day on Tuesday.
Oh, alright. What about the next week, April fourth?
What time?
We have a work session down there on Tuesday night.
Would that be suitable? Is there enough space for a work session?
Yeah, it's a fairly small room. There's certainly enough room for you guys now and a few, a few other people, if you have to make it.
Yeah, I think we probably shouldn't do that. So, seven o'clock on Monday?
Um, planning board meeting here.
Six o'clock on Monday?
Sure.
So. Six o'clock.
Can you notice that, Maria? Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Can I just say something about the Arpa?
Yeah. You can, you can go if you want, Bev, but don't, don't stand the ceremony.
I attended the traffic safety meeting and I know Chief Harrigan was gonna mention this.
He's on the phone.
Okay, great.
Is there Dan?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm not there. Had some, uh, tend to my daughter today. Um, so I, I, we talked about the traffic safety meeting, if you guys wanted to consider, um. Using some funding for the, uh, signs that we need for the traffic safety committee. Uh, we had discussed some radar signs. Um, and, uh, I'm also getting a lot of emails about, uh, the crosswalks and stuff like that, so. Um, I just didn't know if the board would like to consider, uh, using some of the Arpa funding for that. The radar signs are a little more expensive than the crosswalk signs and the other signs, but, uh. You know, if we're gonna be more walker, biker friendly, it's something good that we can have. So why don't you guys consider that?
So how much?
The radar signs are around thirty-two hundred dollars and that is, um, cheap. Uh, comparison to the ones that I, um, the other quotes that I had gotten.
Is that, that's each, how, each or how many?
That's, that's each for each sign.
How many do you want?
Um, well. I would like, um, at least two would be nice. And, um, the crosswalk signs, what's that?
Similar to like the one in Alpaz when you're going into Alpaz, thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, yeah, about thirty-two hundred dollars, so, um, and I, you know, I can consider. You know, we could consider a, uh, quote, you know, depending on how many we would like to order for the, uh. If you guys wanted to do, the traffic safety committee wanted to do the crosswalks as well, um, they might give us a cheaper rate if we ordered more. So, um, the crosswalks, I think we're between fifteen, fifteen hundred, twelve and fifteen hundred, something like that. Um, and, uh, so. Yeah, that's about it.
And what is the, what is the crosswalk sign look like? The flashing light on the sign?
Yeah, yeah, they're solar powered with, um, so we don't have to worry about power and, um, they, uh, they flash. Uh, so that when people, you know, if it's, you know, if, if for a school event, a lot of these signs, you can, uh, control them through a remote. So the schools could, you know, if they have an event, we could turn it on for the event, uh, during the mornings for, uh, crossing guard. Um, I just had a recent one at, um, Cuthbert and Housion, cause that crosswalk there is very busy in the afternoon and in the morning. Uh, I think a sign would be really good to go there. Uh, we, we, we discussed, uh, a lot of this at the, the traffic safety meeting. And there, there are all these signs are solar powered, so we don't have to worry about power. Uh, but I think they're effective and, and, um, they gather data and they, um. You know, so that we can gather the speeds of the vehicles that are going by them and, uh, they're effective tool. We had planned on one this year, which was on Alomal and, uh, Albion around the turn there. Uh, but if we could do more than that, that would be, uh, fantastic, I think, for the residents.
You looking primarily in school zones or on, on the, the school rights of way for walkers? Is that where you're looking at most of these signs?
Yes, yeah, the school. Yes, yeah, the school, and mainly the school, the crosswalk areas, the busiest areas. Um, and we can narrow it down to exactly um, you know, placement in terms of how many we want. They're, they're kinda like this sign, the sign that's going through the school zone by the high school that flashes, you know, when school's in session. They're very similar to those, so.
Who put those in? Was that something put in by the school district or by the village or town?
Or the state.
The state, cuz it's the state road.
Yep, the state put it in. Um, so, um, something for you guys to consider uh, would be great. I think it uh, I know the residents would appreciate it cuz um, now that people are out walking, gas prices are a lot higher. So you got a lot more people walking or dra- or uh, riding bikes. So I think um, you know, pedestrian safety and bike safety and all that stuff is gonna be really uh, important.
Again, just for my own clarification, so both the crosswalk signs as well as the radar signs will collect data on our speed data?
No, 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 just, just the, just the, the radar signs will collect like just speeds. And you, you don't necessarily have to collect it, you can. Yes, it does have a feature on it if you wanna do that, but we, we would mainly do it as a um, use it in the mornings and the afternoons when, during the busiest hours.
So this would, this would enable you to have data to show where you need to increase speed enforcement?
Yeah, well, it, well, it would, it would show us how, you know, if the sign there is being affected, effective. Um, and we could, we can actually gather if, if the, you know, if cars are still exceeding the speed limit, then uh, we'll, we'll know that. So, um, they're, they're, they're a neat tool and I think it, I think we have, we have a lot of young drivers out there now. And, and uh, so I think, you know, uh, getting, you know, some signage up, especially in these areas is gonna be good. It'd be safer for the schools and for the kids walking and playing in the areas.
Remind me, the oldest solar truck boy in June. Speaking of young drivers.
So, so Dan, um, how many uh, crosswalk signs are you looking for?
I, I'm going to conservatively say, I, I, I would like three, three. Um, we, we definitely need, uh, we definitely need one. Um, we could start with three. Um, I'd have to, to, to kick it to the committee to get a definitive number. But we have some really busy crosswalk areas. Uh, I know we talked about Shawna Way, uh, Halcyon and Cuthbert. And um, and then one of, the other area is uh, over by Lincoln School. And actually, there's one by SAC too, that I was up there the other day. We were talking about the traffic up there, just kinda looking at it, see it, see the flow. They, there could, we could use one there too, so.
Does uh, Bridget's one come with a, hmm, a remote controlled landmine?
Radar signs is Cuth, is Cuthbert one of your locations for the radar signs?
Um, the radars, the, the two radar signs that I would like is uh, definitely the one by uh, the traffic safety committee agreed on Albion and Alomal, the second location. Uh, we'd have to decide, there's a couple different places we could go with it. Um, but I, I'd, I'd rather lean on the uh, committee before we make that decision. There, there's definitely a couple places that need it. So, um, the Sunnyside Road area certainly is, is a, a hotbed area and Cuthbert is another area where there's a lot of traffic. Um, so.
Damn, are these movable?
Yes, they are actually. I knew that question was gonna come up. They are movable, so, um, you know, that's something we can consider as well.
So if we get to, if, if, if you can kind of do a rotation, rotation around the village if needed.
Sure, sure, yeah. Yeah, I think it would be, I think it would be um, you know, I'll have to talk to, you know, DPW and Tom, our engineer there. But yeah, I don't, I think we could, we could definitely do that. So, it, I, I think it'll be, it, it will be extremely helpful.
Or effective, it might help like us, you know, something to bring up to uh, you know, at the next forum for the, the linkage study to see if they have any of these types of signage put into their Mohawk Ave.
About that, it, it should jumping jacks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get some price estimates on that then. Dan, maybe you can give us the price estimates, the final estimate.
Yeah, I could send you, I could, I could send you guys, I, we have it all priced out. We have each sign, the price of each sign. I have it all in a PDF and I could send it to y'all, so you can take a look at it.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think one's a no brainer. I think this better's the community's safety issue and I, I would be an advocate for these, so.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think it's a win for the community and one for you guys because it, it really, the, the pedestrian safety is always an issue, especially in the nicer weather months. And you're gonna have more people biking and walking, so the, the more proactive we are, the better uh, you know, the bet, the safer it'll be for everyone.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Alright.
One more thing on our, uh, just, uh, I know there's some logistical questions about, I saw some correspondence from you about it. But the um, grant funding for small businesses within the village. It's uh, I, I think it's important, it's something that I've had people reach out to me for, even if it's uh, half the amount this time around and half the amount um, out of the next round of funding. Uh, with an overall kind of plan and amount. Uh, I, like I said, I know there's some logistics that we need to talk about how much for how many expenses. But the actual, the fact is at that amount, so um, more discussion on that moving forward, I would appreciate.
So, did, did you send your email to everybody or was?
I did, I did reply all, um, you know, some of the.
So Justin sent an email out that had some suggestions with it. I still feel like, feel like we're gonna be damned if we do and if we don't.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, first and foremost, um, you know, as with any, with any grant, you know, the onus is on the business owner to have a, a, a plan. I mean, it's not just, you know, an arbitrary, every business on Mohawk Ave gets ten thousand dollars. That would be our entire ARPA allotment, so, you know, I think it's okay to.
I don't mind if we spend it on that.
Well, no, I mean, and, and quite frankly, our small business is needed, but I do know um, there are several business of, businesses on the Ave that have shovel-ready projects, whether it's, it's.
I didn't see that, you know, I mean, that sounds great and it gives some sort of foundation for um, for the funding to be used for good things.
Yeah, so just in case other trustees didn't see it, it's um, my, my recommendations were shovel, shovel-ready projects that improve or mo- modernize business location. I learned from actually the, one of the new businesses on the Ave that a lot of property owners don't actually pay for the building to suit for their business needs. Um, facade or signage improvement, um, that, that's something I, I consistently hear businesses at the bid talking about needing funding for um, equipment purchases.
Like, you know, it's modeled after the um, from across the river there.
Metroplex.
Metroplex funding, it's, you know, half, half matches.
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's just great ideas. I think that's um,
You know.
Those things that they can't spend money on.
Right. Another big one is equipment purchases, you know, coolers if you're a restaurant. Um, or if you're a, a retail establishment, something to, that will expand your services like an e-commerce platform. Um, website creation or enhancement, because that website creation these days can be, can be quite expensive as we know from our own village website.
Not to exceed limit or something like that.
Um.
Up to five, you know, five thousand or whatever. It's a, a project that's got a, a plan behind it, you know, that makes total sense.
And then also small, the small business must be located, have brick and mortar relocated in the village, less than twenty employees and not previously defaulted on a village loan. And the projects must be completed within twelve months. So the twelve month mark kind of illustrates to it being, you know, shovel-ready and ready to go.
Yeah, cool. So, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to have some flavor of that with this round and next round. And then uh, bust through those projects.
Okay, so I'll send you out a, a list of what we're, where we are so far and we can, tomorrow we, we can work on that, by tuning that some.
Round number four.
Round number four. I know. So, round number four is resolution to acknowledge EFC subsidized financing for wastewater treatment plant. Do you know what that's about? Okay.
So, the total amount of the wastewater project is two point four million. We received a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant and the rest was going to be subs- uh, low interest rate financed through EFC. Um, we qualify for subsidized financing, so um, half of that two million and twenty-five dollars um, they have decided it will be uh, so one million, twelve thousand, five will be interest-free.
Wow. And we have to decide whether we wanna accept that or not.
They just recommend that the board acknowledge the acceptance, so.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the acceptance of uh, subsidized financing for wastewater treatment sewer upgrades.
I second.
Okay, I have five, oh, so we got a, I don't have that in front of me, we got a letter from H two M. Uh, which reads like uh, it, it's, it's, it's for the future uh, presentation designs, whatever, uh, up, up to the, the bond vote. And it's a, it's a payment per hour not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
Not to.
Except it.
Future.
To me, it reads that, that the hourly, each hour isn't gonna exceed thirty-five hundred dollars, but I don't suppose it means that.
Is that something we have to?
We need to, uh, uh, you need to give me permission to sign the agreement with them, so they'll keep working, yeah.
Passed.
Passed today, whatever, last week.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
And what work still needs.
Well, I'm just saying, is it something that we're gonna need to do a competitive bid on long term?
No, that's an ongoing thing, it's not, no, no, that, see, well, certainly, when we get to the architectural work, we will. No question, but no, we need to see this process through and they've already.
This is just a continuation of.
They've been, they've been good to us so far and come to a couple of meetings that they're really not getting paid for. But they're tired of it. I don't blame them.
How much work is left to be done between now and referendum? When is the referendum?
So, we.
We're site selections gonna be.
And Sean's, the, the next, the next item on the agenda speaks to that, if you wanna.
Can we do that before we do this?
Alright. So, round number six is discussion of payments to Hubert Brewer. Uh, got a letter from Sean today, I think it said, uh, that they will do three presentations and a bond vote for uh, a payment of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and all the soup and nuts in between. So, the, talking about a, a bond vote in, in June.
Once that site is selected and prepared.
So, so.
Size and there's actual numbers.
Right, so that's what, that's what H two M will work on. Uh, so tomorrow, we should be able to select a site and get them going. On, on the size of it, the, the, where things go. And then we'll, we'll get specifically what it's gonna cost. And then, then we'll do this, in, built into that is three presentations to the public showing what's.
Yeah, I saw that.
What, uh, what's what?
Is, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we don't, not in any comment to performance or how well it was done, it's just, do we have to, is it something that we're required to do? An RFP in a competitive bid because of side of the amount.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars, what's our procurement policy?
Go ahead.
Well, construction management and design services in New York State fall under um, professional services and therefore aim to be best value to the client and public bidding and free bids and all that is not required under New York State.
Okay, did Lydia say, say that?
Yeah, I just heard Lydia say it. She's in Scotland, but yeah.
No, I, I, I get asked it all the time, so I'm just asking, I'm just asking, uh, because that's our job.
Yeah.
The three presentations, one with those base.
Uh, in between now and then, when we're ready, for sure.
Do you have any timeline?
No. No, but, but he's talking about going until June, so is he, what's your usual, Sean?
As a, as a rule of thumb, we would normally be attending the two-week interval. So the, the idea is a series of five meetings to develop and present the, read the projects components to the public. So five meetings, every other meeting would be a public forum with the, I believe the outline and Mr. Mayor, uh, I think they gave you a uh, of a hundred, one hundred day duration, leads us to a, a June referendum, correct? So the process of meetings where we, we would further define the project with, with, with help from H two M. And then we would present the information and, and get feedback from the public um, over a series of three meetings within that one hundred day period.
So do we have a dollar amount for the H two M resolution?
No, it's up to thirty-five hundred.
That's something different though.
Was it?
I just did go on the board to think that that's the same as what you're talking about for Hubert Brewer.
H, H two M is the design firm. They're the ones doing the renderings.
And I believe this agreement was for the two public forums to discuss the public interest in sites.
Okay.
It, I don't think it takes you beyond that.
So the thirty-six hundred that was previous to this is to the two, the essentially March, the, the first March one and then tomorrow, it's to pay for those services.
It's my understanding, by the way.
So, I wish Lydia were here.
Where is she? Where is she?
Well, no, I mean, if there's discrepancy as to what the contract means, like, I, I.
Just need the, the language for the resolution, that's all.
Well, I mean.
If I could suggest, Dennis is gonna be here tomorrow. Why don't you just table it till tomorrow and I, I don't think the thirty-six hundred is gonna make this and that way we can get the, we can get you a clarification.
Okay.
Not that I speak for each one, but I'm sure Dennis will say.
Well, I just see, the thing is that um, he, he was hoping to get this a week ago, but I said we couldn't do it cuz we didn't have a meeting. Uh, so it says, the, the owner and architect amend the agreement as follows. H two M will prepare and attend up to two public forums to determine public interest in sites. H two M will assist the village to satisfy a FOIL request by sending all. To satisfy a foil request by sending all requested contractual work product to date to the village. All H two M work product is copyrighted. The architect's compensation schedule shall be adjusted as follows, compensation adjustment, current hourly rates. Not to exceed thirteen, thirty five hundred dollars without owner's written authorization. Schedule adjustment as needed to attend meetings and reproduce the work for product. So, they've already told us that, that they've spent seventeen hundred dollars worth of time preparing the material for the foil.
Which seventeen hundred dollars.
Seventeen.
To comply with the foil request.
Yes, yes, it really hurts. But we can't, we're not allowed to build that forward. And it's just like, it's adding insult to injury. But they, they worked at it, I mean, we spent, we spent hours, I spent a couple of full days here.
Give me something to say, I'm like, that's all I need to say.
What, oh.
And then, so. To be, it needs an amount and it needs a not to exceed and it needs a, and I was just reading through the Herbert Brewer one.
So, this, this does not have an amount, it's just, it's, it's the current hourly rates and the total.
Not to exceed.
The total is not to exceed thirty five hundred dollars.
And this is to H two.
This is to H two M per, for what they've already done for us, so it's something we need to, so it's. It's, uh, direct the mayor to sign the. Professional services agreement with H two M relative to the foil and the two meetings.
Okay, I will make a motion for, to authorize the mayor to. Sign an agreement with H two M for an amount now to exceed thirty five hundred that extends their existing contract to comply with. Public meetings and foil requests for our facilities projects.
Thank you, George. Second. Oh, favor.
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
No.
All right. You wanna speak to that or you're just?
Yeah, I mean.
But so.
The. Since I joined the board back in May. I understand that part of this, this. Additional allocation is due to the situation of, of the pandemic, postponing the, the referendum vote. Having two years laps in between that, that first meeting and then the, the one we just did in March. I'm growing increasingly concerned that we don't have a published or established timeline even for the village trustees to know or consider. And when this project is gonna be over.
But we just, we just gave you that, and it's.
I'm talking, when I talk a timeline, I, I know, like, five, ten week interval, we should be at a point now where we're like, this. First public hearing is gonna happen at this date, second public hearing is gonna happen at this date, and a, and a referendum is going to be voted on this date. Concrete, concrete.
I think that's gonna come tomorrow or the next day when there's an actual site selection.
Then we shouldn't be voting on this until we have that, in my opinion, because right now it's up to thirty six hundred dollars.
Thirty five hundred.
Thirty five hundred dollars.
This is, this is for stuff he's already done, this, we've been stringing them along and.
Well, for March and tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
For March and tomorrow, and I think they should, I think they should be paid.
And I think they should be paid too, but.
Okay.
I like knowing going forward, I'd like a little bit more certainty in the process.
All right, so Justin, hang on, give, give Sean a chance to speak and.
I think you understand, the, the bill in front of you for H two M is for services provided for the foil and the two meetings, two weeks ago and tomorrow. The critical path that you speak of is something that I typically develop. Back in twenty twenty, when I was engaged, I developed it. I have not, it's not a matter of being hired or not, but I didn't, I don't know until, that's why I stopped here, did I answer it? Until I understand whether or not, if you are proceeding, I will cert, I would be the one that would prepare the critical cast for you. This is a critical path that we developed the last time I was involved. And I would do something almost identical to that, so I'm just gonna change twenty twenty to twenty twenty two. But you can see, you know, a series of, of five to six meetings, public sessions, mandatory public forum. That would be happening within about a, you know, sixteen, ninety day, you know, period, so, under New York State law. Once the, once the resolution is passed by the village board and it's noticed publicly, you have between twenty six and thirty one days that you need to go to vote, it needs to be on Tuesday. So, that's, you know, it's gonna take some time to get to that position where you're ready to make a resolution. All of those questions that you're asking, is it sixteen thousand feet, fourteen thousand feet, what's the cost per square foot? That has to happen kind of the front end of it, and the first, if you will, call it the first five weeks, and then the resolution and the vote process will happen in the second five weeks. So, I will fully develop that.
And get the dates, we'll get the, and the dates, right?
And the dates, you have to, the dates are really mandated by, it's a kind of funny piece of paper, but it's all over New York State. That gives you the steps to go into resolution into referendum and.
Right.
You have to follow that. Those durations carefully as far as when you post and when you vote. So, that, everything you're, you're speaking of is part of that referendum process that we have made a proposal to.
And, and the reason, thank you for this, the reason why I have concerns with H, the H two M payment, it's unfortunate. That we have to pay this money because though, you know, the site location should have been part of a critical path. That should, we should have voted on all this before we embarked upon the two additional forums. Because now what we're essentially being asked to do is authorize a payment for services already rendered. We should have actually authorized that payment before the services had to be rendered. And those two, finding a location is part of the critical path because we were in a situation where we can't. Do a kickoff meeting until we, we solidified that, so, you know, continue, you'd be asked at this point in time. To, to vote, to pay for services already rendered is, to me, just not good form.
But, no, it's certainly not, Justin, but there, it's, it's what we're stuck with. And it certainly wasn't H two M's fault, you know, we, we had. The, this, the problem with the, you know, which location to go with, we had people add things in, take them out, you know, this is not. They did a whole lot more work. And. I don't think we have anything to complain about on their end.
No, I mean, and perhaps we don't, so it's, it's in, it's our, it's the village's management of this. Project right now to date, and, and I will happily change my vote with the understanding. That no more payment authorizations are going to be made until we have, the information is provided to the board. Before the work is done. I, I, I just, I don't see the responsibility.
And, and, but they're gonna need to come to us very soon with that, with that request, because this is.
I, I've asked them to prepare a proposal for you that hopefully he'll have with him tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's based on this memorandum that we got. The, the Huber Brewer proposal for the.
No, that's, that's different, that's.
So, typically, Huber Brewer provides construction management services, I lead the referendum process. I handle the critical path, I handle the meetings, I evaluate the program, I evaluate the construction cost, I'm responsible for the budget. And I'm responsible for public presentations. H two M is the design component, they are responsible for code related issues, preparing a schematic floor plan that will. Accurately depict the project's intent to the public and prepare an elevation of the building so as the community understands. What the impact of the project will be on its surroundings, and also a site plan which would accurately depict the project's. Location as it relates to side streets and, and main streets in the village, so. They prepare those three documents as part of the resolution for referendum, what we call a schematic design phase. That with those three design documents and your, your village board's. Resolution to go to referendum with some legal help and some bond counsel, you'll have, in my opinion. A full package and Huber Brewer or a construction manager's budget input to set the budget properly and professionally. That would be all of the components you would need to get to referendum.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so, I, I will. I'm happy for the clerk to change my vote to a yes, but I wanna state for the record. Going forward, there should be no more authorization of payments for this project after the work is rendered.
So, noted twice.
Yes.
Okay, item number six is payment to Huber Brewer, should we just not bother, right?
Sorry, it's not a payment, I'm asking for payment, I'm asking for approval of a proposal.
Oh, yes.
And once the services are rendered, I will submit a bill which we would hope would be paid within sixty days of receipt.
Okay.
But this, what is in front of you today is a, is a description of the scope of services. And a cost to provide those services, but a timeline attached to those services that we would be providing. I think in my proposal, I state that it includes all of basically, and with all due respect.
Complete design development.
So.
Phase of all presentations.
Up through a certain date even, and extended to past the hundred days.
July first.
July first, I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say things aren't gonna go as smooth as I envisioned, so, but I, whatever it needs to be done.
Sean, I know the answer already, but could you please explain, we already have, our previous contract with you, has it going through vote? You know, the, the vote. And so does this one, so how do, how do we reconcile that?
The, everything that was in this previous proposal of January twenty twenty, all those meetings were delivered, we had a series, I was there seven times, I believe. Which is where the cost is.
Okay.
So, we delivered everything to you, with the exception of clearly coming here on the day of the vote. For whatever questions you might need answered on that day, so we, we performed our scope of services, you and I talked two years ago. And I said, I owe you a couple of meetings, I'm, I'm not going anywhere, we've been around since eighteen eighty. I am, whenever you're ready, if you need my services, call me, I'd be more than happy to do that, and that's what we've done over the last thirty or forty five days, here is as. We prepared and presented what will be two meetings tomorrow night, plus inter, in, internal meetings to make those presentations. So, to date, up through tomorrow night, you guys don't owe me a penny, I'm good. But I, I, if I'm going to do another series of what will be six or seven meetings over the next hundred, hundred and twenty days and prepare this project. To go to referendum, that is the expense that I will be incurring.
Okay. So, can we have a motion to? Have the mayor sign a contract with Huber Brewer?
I'll make a motion to have the mayor sign a contract with Huber Brewer for the extension of services beyond what was already been refer, uh, provided. Up until the date of the referendum.
And the amount of twenty five.
And the amount of twenty five thousand dollars.
Oh, favor.
Hi.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
I look forward to the critical path.
It's already done, I can say it, but it's. We start each process with what we think is, rule of thumb, we want to be efficient, so, there is a. I've done this twenty times, there, I, there's a series of meetings and a series of H two F that. What you have in front of you is that duration, inevitably, because each project is unique and different, there will be bumps in the road. And those bumps in the road will send us out a couple of weeks, and that's okay, the bump in the road two years ago was this thing called COVID.
Yeah.
Stop.
Yes, and an order from the county saying you can't have a referendum.
So, but it's, and that's unusual, obviously. But we, we will have that prepared for the very first meeting and, in that first meeting, the critical path we put out and, and list of deliverables and, and an agenda for each of the items and.
And then the burden is on the village to make sure that that critical path is then shared and communicated to the residents for good attendance and information, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so we'll supply as we have the best graphics and so forth for the village to convey the word and words with Maria in the past to get stuff on the website.
Awesome.
Yeah, it says in the proposal here, develop the, the.
Notifications.
The notifications, we pay for the postage and.
I just, I don't, I don't do, I can't do four thousand print jobs in mail, that's, I'd be more than happy to help with any of the artwork or any of the media you need. But I don't have postage or printing.
Right, I mean, I just look at like what the downtown connections, uh, scotiaconnections.com looked for, it looked like it was a, it was a project based website that had, you know. All the relevant documents, you know, uploaded for, for the public to read, and then, you know, the proposals and. And everything kind of in one place, and for a project as significant, important and impactful as this. I feel as though we need to make sure that that is something similar to that is also created on our website.
I think we can probably handle that.
It'll help us save on foil requests.
Already cost us. Item number seven, the, the discussion of the riverbank properties, I just wanted to, I sent you the thing from Louis that he gave me last thing today. Did anybody get a chance to look at that? No? All right, let's save that.
When did you send it?
What?
When did you send it?
Louis.
You said I sent that to you today.
Yeah, I, maybe four o'clock, I don't know.
I didn't get it either.
Can we table that?
Well, yeah, certainly. I'll find out, well, frequently, that kind of thing goes in my drafts folder and doesn't. I'll look for it. Uh, I don't remember eight, so. We were having trouble getting the minutes of the previous meeting. On the, the website and approved in, in. Good time. And we talked to Lydia and she determined that it's not actually necessary to approve the minutes, which we've always done. So, proposing to have Maria just post the minutes as soon as they're ready. And have us at the next meeting, you know. Propose any corrections that, that we find when we're reading them, but not actually vote on it. Save us five minutes at every meeting and. Well, no, even if they're, no, if, 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 only if there's a contested change.
Okay.
You know, you wouldn't need to vote on it otherwise, just saying Maria spelled this wrong.
Text her review.
Yeah.
I saw you spelled something wrong.
I've already sent you three minutes in draft form.
Yeah.
Those will just be posted to the minutes, just say draft next to them. I mean, they have a watermark on them, but then.
Then you just take that off at the, after the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah, and I do that with other boards.
Yeah.
Review them, we always do that, so.
That's why we historically always approve them.
We have, because that's in Robert's Rules of Order.
But Nike, um, he spoke with Nike as well, and it's not necessary.
Isn't required.
And they are mine minutes.
And I've never noticed an error, discrepancy in your minutes. And I've never noticed an error or discrepancy in your minutes.
You can't, um. You can't request something that maybe wasn't, so you know what I mean, it has to be relevant.
Yeah.
It has to be part of.
Good. Okay, that's all I got, anybody else?
Just one thing I wanted to bring up, um, on April twenty, uh, April twenty second is Earth Day. Last year, uh, the weekend after Earth Day, um, I would, I would mobilize some volunteers to do a Collins Park cleanup. We also did Freedom Park and along the riverbank, we had about forty volunteers, um, sign up to do that. And I did have a preliminary conversation with, our email conversation with Ryan. Um, and he gave me the AOK. Um, so I'd like the board's, you know, permission to be able to to go out and recruit. Forty plus volunteers to have an Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, April twenty third, two thousand twenty two. And any assistance in, uh, you know, sending out the word would be greatly appreciated. Uh, it's my understanding too that these types of cleanups assist with our, um. What's that report you had me so dramatically read? The Murf, Murse?
MS.
MS four, the, this, uh, these types of events, um, help with our, our MS four certification, so.
Yeah, nineteen seventy three. On April twenty second, it was Easter as well, and. My mother went into labor at the Easter, at the Easter. Forced to wait until it was over till. Birthday.
Great, so April twenty third, the day after your birthday.
It was my grandmother's birthday.
Well, but I mean, Justin and my birthday are right there in the same week.
Yeah, April eighteenth, babe.
Mine's the nineteenth.
I'm, I'm, I'm a tourist, you're a married.
By one day. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess I never got the blessing of the board.
Second.